Welcome to tonight's Payette City Candidates Forum, sponsored by Promote Payette. I'm Kathy Asuda, your moderator for tonight's program. And before we get started, I would just kind of go over a little bit about what tonight's format is going to be like. Our format will be to hear from our four council candidates that are here with us this evening, first, and we will go in order as they are listed on the ballot and in alphabetical order, so we'll go from left to right. And after all the candidates speak, they will have three minutes for opening remarks. And once we conclude the opening remarks session, we will go into a question and answer period. And I would ask that if all members of the audience, there were some cards out in the front, so you had an opportunity to write your question and put them in the basket out there, and there's still time to do that before the Q and A. And the candidates will be able to have three minutes, or two minutes rather, to respond to the questions. And I just wanted Robyn to stand up. Robyn, if you could stand up. Robyn is going to be our timekeeper this evening. And so, please, I would ask that the candidates adhere to the time limits. She will give you a signal for 10 seconds, and then there'll be a stop sign. And then after that, if Barb has to stand up, you're in trouble.
I'll hit you with the camera.
So once the candidates finish the Q and A, and we will open it up for questions from the floor, so if you weren't able to submit a written question, you will be able to do so in that session. And then when the candidates are all completed, we will excuse them, we'll just take a short break, to then have the two mayoral candidates come up, and we'll repeat the process. So I just want to also mention that we have voter registration out in the front, so if any of you would like to get that done today and this evening, you can do so. So we thank County Clerk for being here, the Elections Clerk to be here to be able to do that. And again, we thank Promote Payette for putting on this event, and for all of you for showing up this evening. And I guess it goes without saying that I hope that this evening, both the candidates and our audience, that you act in a cordial and respectful way, so we hope to have a great evening. And with that, Barb, anything else that I forgot?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I think we will get started, so we will begin with Jackie Ashby.
Good evening, thank you for coming. I'm Jackie Ashby. It's nice to see so many of you out supporting this election. I'll bet it was exciting growing up in this town of Payette with so much rich history. I envy it. I was raised in the military, so we moved every two years, so I did not get to develop friendships that you all have had. My husband and I were looking for a place to retire, and we chose Payette. We were looking for a small, close-knit community, and we believe that we have found it. I am a registered Republican, I am conservative, and I am pro-life. And with my military background and parents and other family members that have been given been giving many service, years of service to ensure those rights, I don't believe that government has the right to control us when it comes to religion, guns, or mandatory vaccines. I believe this town needs to embrace the change that is here, the change that is coming, the growth that is coming. And I believe that the citizens need to come out of their homes and start asking, and they need to start supporting and enforcing the politicians that are in their city, and making sure that they are doing what the citizens want and what they were elected to do. I had the opportunity to meet a lot of citizens when I put signs in their yards and to meet them, and get their feelings on Payette and the job that they feel the city is doing. And I have to say with sadness that the people of Payette are not happy. It is apparent that they have not been happy for a very long time. They all say the same thing over and over, and I'm probably not going to be very popular for making this statement, but it is quoted from so many people that I have spoken to that they believe that this town has been run by a group of people that don't want change, and actually, that is not realistic. Your schools are in desperate need of change, your downtown, I don't even know where to begin. The ordinances in this town are almost, in my opinion and their opinion, nonexistent for being enforced. I hope that all of you will support the people that you elect, and again, I'm willing to give it my all, I hope that you are too.
If you need, my name is Bobby Black. I have lived here my entire life, well, almost. Started first grade here, graduated from Payette High School here. Very proud to be a pirate. I have been married for 34 years next month, have two adult children, Lisa and Jeremy, four grandsons and one granddaughter that absolutely cannot do anything wrong in my eyes, and my daughter's laughing. I have worked for the city of Payette for 21 years and feel that my background in payroll accounting and human resources gives me a good idea of what happens in city council and what government needs to happen like that. I was on the volunteer Payette Fire Department for 25 years, I retired three years ago, wrote grants for both the city and the fire department, and received several large grants and several small ones throughout my years there. I am retiring from the city. I'm just working two days a week right at the moment to help them get through the audit and the budget year, and then I'll be leaving for retirement, and hopefully will be elected as your city councillor. I feel that I would do a good job, would listen to the people, and make decisions on that.
Hello, my name is Kathy Patrick. I've spent most of my life here. My great-grandparents came here in 1900. When I was a small child, my dad worked construction, so this is where we came home to. We always came home to Payette for Apple Blossom, for school shopping, to the doctor, to thy doctor dentist, and so on. I have moved out of the area and back, I have been here this time since 1994, and I do not intend to leave again. Right now, I am the Executive Director of the Payette Senior Center. I have been instrumental, in my eyes at least, making that a better place for seniors and people of all ages in our community. Two and a half years ago, when this awful pandemic started, I created a food pantry, which I'm very proud to say we serve anywhere from 300 to 500 boxes per month to people in our community. I love Payette. I am a big advocate for the Payette Sony Polish, any of you that know me know that, and all the other amenities that we have to offer, our golf course, our airport, our phenomenal library, and all of the parks that we have here. In our future, I see growth, we need to do something about the downtown quarter, there are plans in place at this time to improve that, to improve our parks, and continue to make Payette a beautiful place to raise your children. Thank you.
My name is Ray Wickersham, and I think they're going down by age, because I've been here, I was born in this town, and you know when they took the hospital lot, you have to go check that out. So I've been here most of my life, I graduated from Payette High School, and I went to the University of Idaho and got a bachelor's and master's degree, and then I did leave for California for six years, and just never felt like I was home again. So we moved back, raised my family here, my kids graduated from high school here, my grandkids are going to school in this area. Payette's been my home for almost forever, all my friends from high school are still like brothers and sisters to me, and a lot of you out here I've known most of my life. I really questioned about whether I was going to run for council again, but there's still a lot of stuff I want to do, and I'm going to take the opposite side. I disagree that Payette's got a lot of problems. Payette does have a lot of problems, but we've came a long way, and I don't know how many of you know, we were voted the most affordable city in the state of Idaho. That's not a bad thing to have. There's a lot of things that need improvement, everybody knows downtown is one of the main ones. And we have 50 acres of parks, we have an airport, we have a swimming pool, we have stuff that no other city our size in the state of Idaho has. And downtown is a priority. One of the main reasons I'm running again is the downtown quarter, but it's not an easy thing to fix. So if somebody thinks they have a magic wand and it just gets fixed, it doesn't. Every little town in the state of Idaho and around the nation suffered from downtown issues like this, because we all, I remember, and a lot of you do, what downtown Payette looked like when we were young. And so it's one of those things where you have to build back different, and I think we have kind of a plan to do that. So I'm really going to tell you right now that I'm proud of this town. Yeah, we've got things we need to fix, and things are going to change. Under some of the leadership I think we're going to have, it will happen, but I'm going to tell you right now, anybody who wants to criticize my town, it's their own place to do it.
Well, thank you, candidates, and you did a fabulous job. Barb never had to stand up once, so thank you. Well, now we'll move into the question and answer session. And so we have received several questions from the audience, so some of them are directed to all the candidates and some to specific candidates, so I'll let you know which ones are which. So this is a question for all of the candidates to respond, and it doesn't matter how you can choose how you'd like to respond, and you do have two minutes to have your remarks. So the first question is, what's more important for our city right now? Building new homes and commercial spaces, or rehabbing, expanding, better utilizing our existing homes and storefronts? And again, that's to all the candidates.
I don't think there's a yes or no answer to that one. What we've seen and what we've really been encouraging is to build the infrastructure. We have a lot of area inside of Payette that's never been built on, and finally, it's becoming practical to build houses and stuff in some of the infrastructure area. One of the things we're all concerned about is how much growth we're seeing in Payette. It's scary. I can remember as a kid seeing two houses built in a year if we were lucky, and now, in a week, we're having two houses built. So the growth is really a tough thing to deal with, and everybody, you know, you look at the city council, we don't have black magic answers to that either, but we are trying to control the growth, and there's a lot of infrastructure being built and fixed right now to handle that growth. So I don't think there's a black magic answer of which one it is. We are going to see growth whether we like it or not. It's creeping this way from Boise, and we all know it. We can't stop it, but we can try to do as much as we can to control it and make it, you know, not change our lifestyle. Scares the heck out of me, but you know, I think the council that we have is really struggling and working really hard to kind of make this a growth that we can all handle and be proud of.
I do agree with Ray, but I do think that we need to infill some of the existing lots that we have in town and expand that area, and the council has done recently some new ordinance changes that allows that to happen a little bit more, to allow that infill to happen. I do believe that we need to certainly get businesses into our town, I think that will help all of us. The growth is definitely there, I have a large subdivision going into Honeymoon, it's actually been pretty fun to watch it grow, but it is everywhere, and I think we do need to keep an eye on that and not let it get too far above our means.
Well, I'm going to say that I believe that the city needs to be more open, armed, I guess, and helpful to people coming in, such as myself, when we purchase a house, and they have to realize that new businesses coming in, new homes being built, that's tax revenue for the city to help the city out. And so I think if there's holes to jump or go through, then I think it'll make it more inviting for more people to want to come to Payette, and the city, I think, will benefit from that. I mean, growth is coming, we need to embrace it.
Well, I tend to agree with Ray and Bobby. I believe the equal balance of taking care of what we already have plus the new growth. We have ordinances in place, and we really try hard as a council to look at individual plots and new building so that they are done the proper way. It's really quite a balancing act, but I really think that in the future that we will continue to look at both and encourage people to come to our city council meetings to find out what the ordinances are, and be welcome in our city hall to do the same.
It's always our fault for not being there.
All right, thank you. And so speaking about ordinances, this is relating to an ordinance regarding 14% pertaining to landscaping. So the question to all of the candidates is, why is this not being done?
What are you talking about?
I guess my question is, is it for residential or commercial?
It doesn't say, it just talks and makes reference to 14% of landscaping out of particular ordinance? I'm not sure.
I believe it's addressing commercial building, or commercials. And the 14% can be certain, it doesn't have to be trees and trubs and, you know, the whole thing, it can be one tree here and then the grass and even rock or bark and that to make that happen. I'm not aware that it's not being followed.
I guess I'd be interested in that one myself, if somebody has a question on it to come down and talk to us, because I'm not sure it hasn't been followed either. We've never had anybody bring that up.
Does the person who wrote the question, do they want to clarify it for us, maybe we'll get a cleaner answer?
Anyone that wrote the question want to further clarify that, the candidates?
Let's move on.
Okay. Kathy, did you have any comments? All right, okay. All right, again, this is a question for all the candidates. How will you encourage the strengthening and enforcement of city regulations, make business tenants and homeowners to keep their property clean?
So there's a real fine line there between enforcing and the rights of a property owner, and at this point, I believe it is my understanding that an ordinance officer is, has to be contacted, and they go out and talk to people, and there's a certain form, I believe, they're served with if they don't comply the first time. It is something we definitely need to work on. I will agree with that.
Yeah, it's an endless battle for ordinances and stuff to be careful not to encroach on private citizens' rights, and then yet to keep things up and, you know, looking good. It just depends on how much stronger I'm going to want to get, but there's ordinances in places to do this, and we do go out, and the ordinance officer gives tickets and other stuff, and it just, you know, how much of a Gestapo group you want to be. It's an ever-ending battle to make everybody happy with the way things look, and, you know, we do the best we can, and even we complain to the ordinance officers a lot of times, the city council, it says, you know, you need to go out and look at this and clean it up, because there's several spots in this town, I'm not going to argue, that need to be changed, and it's, we're working with them, working with the ordinance officers trying to do that, it's just an ever-ending thing to try to fix.
Well, I'd like to see maybe an ordinance committee formed, because I think we're asking too much of one person to be an ordinance officer for this entire area, maybe break it up in zones, maybe have volunteers. I don't think it's the citizens or the neighbors next door to the house with an issue, their responsibility to call it in and say they feel the ordinance is being violated. I think it's the city's duty to do that.
I would just like to add that I know our ordinance officer is new, she is doing a good job. I do also know that they do take the complaints at city hall, and she does follow up on those complaints. I don't believe the one person has time to drive around and monitor everything unfortunately in our city that is wrong, so she does address the issues that do come before her.
All right, thank you. Next question for all the candidates. If elected, what three steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial fleet?
We have, you guys, a lot of them come down and attended budget hearing. We would love to have more people in the council down there. We always are amazed when it comes to taxpayer dollars, and we have budget hearings for two months and nobody ever shows up. We are not in that bad a financial shape. When I first got on the council, and Craig mentioned one of the reasons I ended up getting on the council, because the levy rate in Payette was either number one or number two in the state of Idaho. We had the highest levy rate, or one of the highest levy rates in the state of Idaho, especially for towns our size. And now, we are down, I think it's 50, we're down where we belong, but, and we're still financially sound, but we do realize that we have to keep enough reserves in there, and we're trying to build our reserves back up. But in my opinion, if you raise the levy rate every year and every year just to get your reserves built up or buy everything you want, eventually you're so expensive, nobody wants to move to your town. And so we, I'm really proud of the fact that we've got the levy rate down at, right now, it's the lowest levy rate I think Payette's ever had on record. Part of that was because of COVID and the way that worked in, but we have one of the lowest levy rates in the state, and we have one of the lowest levy rates right now that Payette's ever seen. So the effort is, is to build it back up a little bit, but to keep the levy rate solid. We have enough inflation and other stuff that we're getting more income in, and yeah, we can always spend every dollar that, I mean, there's a lot of stuff if we want to spend money on, including me, but I also want the levy rate to be attractive and affordable for people who live here, because right now, like it or not, most of the houses and stuff in this town, most of us couldn't buy back if we moved out of them. Everything's inflated so bad, and so our taxes are going up whether the levy rate moves or not. So, you know, financially, we're, we've had good audits for the last six or eight years. The auditor has looked at the audits and said, yeah, you know, you can build up a little more reserve in this fund or this fund, but he has not complained about any of the funds that we're sitting in right now. The pool is probably our toughest mark.
I agree with Ray that even before I started city council, I attended meetings, and I believe that they've worked very, very hard for our community to spend the money the best way that needed to be spent, and I want to echo and challenge every one of you that is sitting here, come to our city council meetings, voice your opinion, tell us how you want your money spent, because it is your money, but like he alluded to, nobody comes to our meetings. We're also now on Facebook, I would encourage you, if you don't want to leave your home, to watch the meetings. It's very important, we're just representatives, we need your input.
Well, I believe that our levy rate is at a really good place right now, and yes, our audits have been good. I do believe that writing grants to get that extra money in for us is a good thing for us to do. I know they have put some money for that purpose in the budget to help write the grants, and I know staff can do some of the grant writing themselves. There's lots of avenues to tap into to get the additional help that you need for that. I believe that coming to the public hearing in the budget process, having the citizens tell us what they want, do they still want all these services available to them? You could certainly cut some of your budget that way, but if the citizens want that, then I believe you should keep it in there.
I have not had the opportunity, as these three people have, to look at the budgets, but I look forward to it.
All right, so this is a somewhat related question regarding financing. Sometime back, the infrastructure in Payette was adequate to support the population at the time. The infrastructure included streets, water, sewer parks, treatment plant, et cetera. Now with all the new building and subdivisions, that infrastructure is no longer adequate to each of you. Who do you see paying for the necessary upgrades? Again, kind of related to some of what you already commented, so I ask if you have any additional remarks.
We are actually, a lot of the infrastructure stuff, like the water and sewer, we're in pretty good shape, but we found, we had, we bought a camera system a few years back, and guess what? When you look at stuff inside, it doesn't look as good as it does on the surface. And so we found there's a lot of stuff that we needed to fix. However, we have a budget set out for the next five to 10 years that is still going to keep our rates competitive, and we're going to replace a lot of the stuff. We have a water tank going up on the hill, we have a new well, we have several things that are going to be built, and we're still going to be really competitive with our water and sewer rates. So all of this stuff has been looked at from the engineering standpoint and other stuff, but we did get some big surprises when we started putting cameras down the sewer lines and other stuff, that nobody realized the issues. But in the long term, what that's going to do for us, it's going to make us keep a better eye on stuff and have a longer-term goal. A lot of the new buildings and the stuff that's out here now, a lot of that's been paid for by the developers. We're pushing a lot of that back on the development when they do it. We do have a couple of streets, I'll throw one out, but we're all scratching our head on the 7th Street going out to Vista Air. It's half county, it's half city, the developer's going to work on part of it, but that street's a nightmare. I hit a pothole on it today, I thought I was going to break my tire off my car, and, because I drive out there all the time. So it's not cheap to replace a street that far, so we have to go out and hopefully we can prepare some grants, some state funding, or some kind of other funding before we pass that on to the taxpayers. This council, and I'm really proud of the fact, we don't like to throw this money back on the taxpayers just because we could do it. We are going to go out and try to find as many different ways to fund this stuff as we have to, but, but most of the development and the growth we've got going on right now, you know, a lot of the new stuff is being paid for by the development that's putting it in, so it's, it's being spread out by homeowners for buying those properties.
I agree again with Ray on that subject. We have done our very best to accommodate growth while keeping and I are making sure that the infrastructure, the sewer and water is still maintained for the original customers here in Payette in the downtown area. I believe we built a new lift station, and we continue to monitor and work with developers so that they absorb part or at least half of the cost on these new developments.
My comment on that is with the ARPA money that we received, the 1.6, one of the four categories was for it to be dedicated for infrastructure, and the council did seek that to go to water sewer and some streets and some other things in the park, but I think that is vitally important, and the older infrastructure does need to be taken care of, and we are in the process of updating that also. I do believe that the developers do need to pay for their share of the development in town. I don't believe it should be passed on to the taxpayers.
So not to sound redundant, I agree with all three of them.
All right, so let's shift gears over here. Here is a question regarding... All right. So let's shift gears over here. Here is a question regarding places and things to do for the local teen population. So the question is, what would you like to see developed in our city for our teen population? They have nothing or no place to go for recreation.
I was actually talking to one of my friends today about that. And when we grew up on military bases, we always had a teen club. And that was for 13 to 18 year olds to go to. We were actually downtown looking at empty spaces today to see if any of them would work for that. And I think that it would give them a place to go to feel like it was theirs. They could all meet there. We had a teen club pass. They could get in with ID, maybe five dollars a month. And maybe the city could absorb some of that expense. But the parents, I think, would get some kind of comfort knowing where their kids are or what they're doing. And there are a lot of things that we could get grants to help us out in that program.
I do feel that our recreation department, we're hiring our recreation director in February. I, she has made great strides for our pool, getting it back reopened again. And I know that she's talked about at the council meetings of having plans to further the activities in our parks. Pickleball, I'm not for sure what that is, but that seems to be pretty popular. I would love to see it go back. When I was a child growing up here in Payette, we always seemed to have things to do. The youth lodge that the Kiwanis alumni have been working on, we are close. We put in for a T-Mobile grant. We have not heard whether we got that or not. It would definitely be dedicated for our youth, for meeting places and activities to participate in.
You just hit my button. How many of you know where the Boys and Girls Club is in Payette, Idaho? All right. The Boys and Girls Club has a teen center. And the biggest thing is, is to get in the stigma past the teens to go to this teen center like that because most of them, we were all teenagers at one time too, a month and a long time ago. But, but the Boys and Girls Club, we have a phenomenal Boys and Girls Club in here. And they're really doing a good job. The numbers are continuing to go up. They're helping kids, they feed them, they have activities for them. If, if any of you want to go down to the Boys and Girls Club just to see what it really is, contact me. I'll take you down there. You can go down there yourself on any time. But, but we really worked hard to get that club in here. Very few towns our size have a Boys and Girls Club. And it, it's something I'm very proud of. Of all the things I've done so far in City Council, that's the one that I'm most proud of. And a lot of these people in this room helped do it. In fact, most of you in this room helped do it. So you need to be really proud of the fact that we have that here in town. And we have a good facility for it. And then the youth lodge downtown, or down in the park, I was part of the committee that helped work on it to save it. It's going to add more places for the youth to be able to use our parks. I'm a big advocate of everything we can find for the youth to do because hopefully they'll come back, they'll stay here instead of just leaving Payette. But yeah, the Boys and Girls Club is a big number one on my mind.
I agree with what they've all said. And we also have a wonderful swimming pool. I think Tiffany's doing a phenomenal job at what she's doing. I think it could be marketed a little bit better. There are a lot of people who move into Payette that do not realize we have an indoor pool. And when we get it up and going, it is open year round. It's phenomenal. I would like to see more people use it as a family. You can have parties there. You obviously have to book ahead of time. But we are very fortunate to have an indoor pool. The next closest indoor pool would be in Caldwell. And ours is a lot more affordable than theirs is.
All right, thank you. So there are several questions regarding conditions, sidewalks, storefronts, tumbleweeds, kind of some general issues regarding a clean city. Do you have any remarks regarding what could be done? There's also some issues, or someone brought up the fact that people are parking on the sidewalk or on the wrong side of the street. Why aren't you being cited? So kind of a variety of some concerns about some things. I'd like to hear your response.
One of those, part of those is the downtown, I chuckle because I got pictures of people parking. I have an office downtown. There's no curb to stop anybody. So the trucks just park on the sidewalk. But we have some effort towards downtown and that's going to be one of the emphasis. The sidewalk issue, we had a council bring up an option and we did pass that. Mostly we may not realize it, but there is now 50 cents a month being added to your water bill for sidewalk repair. Because repairing sidewalks has gotten expensive and most people in town, a lot of them haven't fixed their sidewalks, they can't afford it. But now there's a fund that will pay, reimburse you, I think it's half up to $2,500 or anyway. You can check at City Hall exactly how we wrote that ordinance. But there's money now being put aside from everybody's water bill and stuff to help repair sidewalks. Weeds and stuff are things we always, you know, we have, we have pickup. Very few cities I know our size actually has, you know, come out and pick up your leaves and stuff out of the streets. I've had so many people tell us that that's one of the things they really like about this town is that we have street cleanup and stuff. It's a never ending battle for some of that stuff too. But we do have some things in place. And like I said, we try to do the best job we can for something you have a better ID on or something. Again, we're trying to get City Hall more opened up where people can come down. And we're going to try to have some town hall forums. That's something that's really kind of got me excited. They could try to get more people involved with things in town. But there are some things in place to try to fix some of this stuff.
Cleanup in the downtown has always been kind of a project of mine. We had some wonderful people, one of them is sitting in the back row, who organized a cleanup and showed what could be done in Payette. And one day, in four hours, and the weather was horrible. How many people showed up to wash windows, sweep the sidewalks, and just make downtown look better? This is something I think, it's hard to do, but we need to instill pride in each individual person in their home, or if they own a business downtown. It's hard to legislate that. It's something that we have to do, I think, by example. And if need be, maybe some enforcement of ordinances. But we really need the people to take responsibility for their buildings.
I do agree with Ray and Kathy. I was going to touch on the sidewalk fund. We have over $18,000 in there right now. And we have not had one application come to City Hall to be approved by council. So I think that is something that we need to educate our people in our town. Everything like that is on our website. We have such a transparent city, I believe, showing everything that's out there. You can pretty much find anything you want information on that on our website. I do think it's a responsibility of the business owners and the property owners. And it does go back to the code enforcement. There's only one person, and unless they have complaints, it's hard for her to keep up with all that.
Being a homeowner that just replaced all of her sidewalks for $5,000, because I have a big corner lot, yeah, that's a lot of money. And even if they're willing to pay up to $2,500, a lot of people are retired, maybe on fixed incomes. Most people are working, their earnings are stretched. Maybe they've lost funding because of COVID and they've been out of work. That's a lot of money to still come up with. I think we ought to go for grants to do the sidewalks.
All right, thank you. Several of you made comments regarding encouraging folks to come down and attend City Council meetings and get involved in the process. What are some other ideas? We had a couple of questions regarding how would you better involve citizens in decision making process? Are there other ideas that you have that you can engage and encourage participation from local residents in the decisions being made by the city?
Hire a marketer.
Yeah, that's another topic. Well, we are hoping to start having regular town hall meetings every month or two. The question is, is rallying some of you to do it. But I think there is enough key people in this area and stuff that if we start making it a little more visible, that these aren't judgment day, they're just come down and share ideas, that we can start getting people down and do it. Because that's been one of my complaints for a long time. And it's not just, you know, the youth, it's the adults too. We, we used to have the J.C.'s, the Lions, the Kiwanis, we had all these organizations that everybody participated in. And they did amazing stuff in town. And we're not the only town. Every town's lost those. I don't know where that went, but I would sure love to give it back. But we're going to do what we can and try to get some people more involved. Because the heart of a town is the people who come down and work and do stuff in it. I always told people, I said, you'll never get anything out of anything you don't put anything into. And if you, if you don't want to put anything into it, you're not going to, you're going to sit back and complain. You're not going to get anything out of it. One of the reasons that I love this town so much is I participate in stuff. I mean, I take care of the cross. I'm in the chamber. I'm on the City Council. And I like doing that stuff. It makes me proud of what this town is. And if you guys got some black magic answers to how to get people to start doing that, join me. I mean, that's the most frustrating thing I have, getting people to come down even to budget hearings and stuff.
I too wish we had a magic wand to answer that question. I belong to several civic organizations. And as I spoke earlier, I'm the director of the Payette Senior Center. Getting people to cooperate, volunteer, I don't have the answer to that. I have been trying for seven years just to get volunteers at the senior center. And everybody's too busy. They have something else to do. And I see the same thing in the Lions Club and the Eagles and some of the other things that I participate in. So I would welcome answers from the people that are sitting out in the audience today.
I do not have the answer for that. I would like to see the public obviously get more involved. I'm being honest, maybe a survey going out. I just don't have that answer. Certainly open to any ideas that anybody has, you know, to contact City Hall, contact the council and mayor, and see if we can move forward with something.
I think the people in Payette need to realize they are only going to get the results of the energy that they give out. They are going to have to come out of their houses and start participating. And they're going to have to come into the city and make suggestions. And I believe the city, when they greet people, when they come through the door, they need to have an open arm policy to help them in and feel comfortable coming in.
All right, thank you. Well, I've been getting the motion to move on. So before we take the short break and we have our mayor candidates come up, are there any questions on the floor? Anyone that didn't get a chance to submit a question? Could you please come down to the front and I'll give you the microphone?
Hello, candidates. How are you? Hey, we need to know what is going on with the plan for the long term. Nobody's talking. I need, I need some answers.
There is a, there is a group that's getting, starting to build. And we have some rough stuff together. We're pulling together some different plans that other cities have used. And, and the reason you haven't is, is we're, we're close. But we really don't, I mean, if we just pass out something that's fragmented and nobody's going to know what it is, it's just going to muddy the water. And so I'm just telling you, when, when we're ready, in fact, I've already talked to you about being part of that group. It's something that we've got a fairly piece right up on, but we're trying to pull together stuff from other towns and other things. And we've been in contact with the state through a guy named Jerry Miller. Just for some of you that don't know on that question, I'm one of those that have looked at downtown for a long time and watched every Band-Aid we've thrown at it. And I'm tired of the Band-Aids. We're making a move to take a look at a major redesign of downtown. Now, whether we can pull that off, I don't know. But I'm going to give it heck. And it's going to take a lot of people involved in the community to do it. But that's the one thing we really need to take a look at and fix. And we're on process to do that. We have got the plan at least started, it's sketched out. And we're probably within the next month or two, we'll be able to show some stuff to people that would want to be on that committee.
No. I, we are working on grants. And you start out with one grant. And if we do it properly and receive it, we can snowball it into multiple grants. Technically, it will be your money because federal grants come out of one pocket versus the other pocket might be the city right here in town. So bottom line, you're going to pay for it one way or another. But it has to be done. If we're going to get anything accomplished in Payette, we've got to take care of the downtown so we can invite businesses. My dream is to see a tour up, start it over again, and then attract small businesses. We're not going to attract big box stores. But I look down the street, I spend a lot of time on Main Street. And we need, like, for example, I have looked, there is not a cobbler in this area. And we have a lot of people that would like to have boots repaired, belts made, so on. Little businesses like that, a sandwich shop, maybe a coffee and sandwich shop for downtown. There are people starting to move into the downtown area. A lot of our old buildings have apartments built above them. We need to utilize that. Approximately 20 years ago, they came up with a program called Small Town America. And the basis of that program is when people start living downtown again, instead of going out to the suburbs, they're going to need these little shops and make everything convenient so they can walk. But in order to do that, we are going to have to make it better. We need to involve the community. I think what we do for a committee, that people who have businesses on the street should be part of that community. We need input, folks. And it is, it's something that's going to take a long time. But I see that it can happen in the next five years.
I don't have much comment on that. I've not been on City Council and implemented the plans, but they started on that. I do agree that we do need to go revitalization downtown. And I do agree that it's small businesses, small restaurants that need to come in there. And that will start expanding our downtown.
So I have a question for you, Ray. Do we have absolute projected dates for this plan that you have and how many citizens can be able to follow along with it as it goes and make decisions?
Once we get enough of a sketch out and kind of a concept plan, then we're going to have a, we've got, we've already talked to a few people about being on the committee. And with that committee, then we will have some downtown sessions where we invite the public in to take a look at it and make comments or changes to whatever we want to do. And then part of what Kathy said is, yeah, somebody's going to pay for this. And we're trying to keep it as much as we can. There's, you know, the feds want to give us all this wonderful infrastructure money, which they can't figure out. But all of us have said, look, if we're ready and we have a plan ready, somebody's going to get that money. It might as well be Payette going after it. And that's what, that's what my hope is. I want to have a plan ready that we can push the state on. I think they owe us. I mean, every town around us has done some remodeling downtown and we haven't. So I, this is the point in my life where I can be a pain in the butt to the state of Idaho because I think we can bug them enough to say, come on, you need to figure out a way to help us do this. The streets aren't safe. That's one method. They're not very pretty. Nobody wants to go down and walk down a street that has no trees or plants or anything much on them. But the roads are crowned. You park on the sidewalk because your, the curbs aren't going to stop your truck. There's just a lot of things that we have that needs to be fixed. But we have a really wide downtown, white streets, diagonal parking. There's just so much we can do with that downtown. And that's kind of what we're trying to get built up to. And we're really hoping to have something pursuing in the next couple of months with people getting together in meetings. So that's what we're hoping.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, so I can't just ask for an answer as far as like what the plan is. We keep hearing everybody saying, there's a plan, there's a plan. And we'll tell you what it is after the election. I don't think that's good enough. I mean, like, it's not good enough for me. It doesn't get me. I mean, like, it's not good enough for me, and it doesn't get my vote at least. So if I don't hear a plan, like, that's, I've got another thing here too. So I personally, like, I use the green belt a lot, I use the river a lot. And I have personally tried to take some responsibility for those things that have been personally shut down. I asked to just have the chain moved so that I could, so I could bring my truck in and take out some of the debris along the, along the river. I was told that the city did not ask for my, you know, the help of the citizens and is essentially denied, you know, got a, denied request for that. And I'm like, that's, that's our stuff. I mean, like, I'm trying to take personal responsibility for the things that I use. And if we would all just do that, then everything would be a whole lot better. Problem is, in a lot of cases, we're not allowed to. So I wanna know that that's gonna change so that we can actually have a city that we, you know, put into and can be proud of.
I also asked why we can't have volunteers help clean up the city. And I was told also that they could not because they would not be covered under insurance by the city if they were hurt. And it's like, can't they sign a waiver as a citizen of Payette? If we don't have the funds, we don't have the employees to do it? Why can't the citizens of Payette do it if they're standing there, willing to do it like this gentleman?
I've been involved with some cleanup as a volunteer. But, but just for one person to go down and do it and unlock a gate, I think that's part of the problem. I don't know what particularly what your case was there. But, but I, I know several years ago, several different groups, and we've done it more than once, have went down and cleaned the green belt up. We've got thirty to forty to fifty people down there and went down and cleaned the weeds up. And I cut brush around the pond, and we've done that several times, and it was all volunteer help. But it's had to be coordinated, because, you know, we can't just go down there and take a chain down, let anybody that wants to drive in there. But, but if it's coordinated with the city, I, I, I've been in. We had a downtown cleanup with volunteers, and they did an excellent job. And that was all run by volunteers. And so it can be done. I apologize, I'd like to know exactly some of the worst circumstances that you ran into, but, but I'm gung ho. I was really impressed with the volunteer group that cleaned up downtown. They did a whale of a job doing that, and they did it in one day. And like I said, when I went down and down the green belt, down, we cut down brush, we cleaned out around the pond, we fixed the deck over the pond. They cleaned up all the trash going down the green, or the walkways. But it would be nice if people would pick up their own stuff coming out of there a little bit, but then that's the world we live in, unfortunately.
So what is the procedure for a citizen if they want to do that? Is there a set procedure that the city has in place? If they walk into the city, that they can sign up to do that?
Bobby, you don't, you can.
I know. I have a lovely voice, I probably believe this. I know that we do have a volunteer forum down there. I would, yes, it would depend on what you're going to do. That we would clear it with IGRIM, our insurance company, to make sure that there is nothing liable for the city by the volunteering of a certain project. But I've not heard them denying anybody to do that. I don't know his circumstance, I was not involved in it. So, but I do know there is a forum that we have for volunteers to do certain projects around town.
Do you know what the turnaround time is for that?
I don't believe, I don't believe it's that long. I've seen it happen in two or three days. If they come in with a plan, that this is what they like to do, you know, we run it by our appropriate departments that we need to, to make sure that the city is safe, that, you know, nothing's gonna come back on us with that. And I know that it has been done.
All right, thank you, Bobby. Kathy, did you have any comments? All right, we'll take this question, and we'll have one more.
Okay, thank you. I want to commend all four of you for coming out and running. I appreciate the work that people do in our city council and our government. And I agree, and I think it was you, Jackie, who had said that we should support you. And if we wanna see changes in our city, we have to show up. And even a boring budget meeting, sorry, but, you know, where are them going? Now, I'm originally not from here, but I've been here twenty-one years, and I am proud of it, and I have seen the progress that has been made. One thing I am concerned about, because I have noticed a big change. I work over in Ontario area, near neighbors. And we do see, you know, with the dispensaries, with the homeless, with the Canadians coming in. And, you know, hypodermical type experience, just thrown around in the garbage. Since Ontario is on the neighbor, how are we supporting our police department, especially with the growth of our population? How are we supporting our police department? And are there programs like Neighborhood Watchers? I know there was at some point. But have those discussions been happening to where Payette is such a beautiful area, and unfortunately, drugs is an issue? And man, well, yes. Are we having these conversations on how to protect our citizens but have empathy and compassion for those struggling? Can you comment a half a place? Thank you.
I can comment as much as I can on that one. I think the answer is yes. We have a new police chief. We've had some really good-looking police chiefs. We've got a Gary Marshall just took over, and he talked at Chamber a couple weeks ago. And he was really encouraging to listen to. We do have a drug task force in Payette, which very small towns do. Is Oregon a problem? Yes, but they work really well with Oregon, with Ontario, and they have a good communication back and forth. Ontario, because of the laws of Oregon, has created some issues for us, there's no doubt about it. But Gary seemed to think that we, he has pretty good control of it. He has some really good officers, we're pretty much full staff now. So, you know, I, I think if you had any questions and somebody wanted to do that, we definitely have the chief down and have a group session. But I feel really good about it. And, you know, we're a little bit unique in that we have a police department and a county department in the same town. So we have, we have a lot of backup. You know, one gets called, we dispatch both of them. Sometimes that might be a little bit of an overkill, but it does give us a little bit more strength in our police department. And, you know, I'm pretty proud of the police department we have at this point. And I think the new police chief, if you don't know him, he's really open, and I think you're gonna really like what you see from him.
Again, this is a subject I think that we all need to take and participate in. Each one of us needs to take responsibility for checking on a neighbor, making sure they're doing okay. One thing that our town sadly lacks, and I deal with on a daily basis, that I would like to see help with for the community, is homelessness. A lot of people don't realize just how many families here in Payette in the last two years have become homeless through no fault of their own. They rented a home, the landlord figured out he could make a whole lot more money because of what our community is doing right now as far as the price of homes. And I would like to see the people in the community and our churches form a coalition to help take care of this. It's a sad thing when you, I had a lady approximately six weeks ago, lost her home, two kids, she's living in her car. There was no resources available. I called all over. I finally got someone to work with me, and we got a motel room. But that's a short fix, folks. Like it or not, this is a problem in our community. And part of it is from the Oregon situation, but a whole lot of it is the price of rent and people getting their homes sold out from under them because they are renters. It's another reason that I think that each one of us in this town needs to take responsibility. I'm not a religious person, folks, but I believe we could more put us on the search to help each other. And we really need to start doing that.
I was wondering, do we have the DARA program in our schools?
We do have a drug, or a officer that goes down and attends, goes down to the school, and he's there on a regular basis for the kids and stuff. I don't know all the details of that, but I do know there's a police officer assigned to the high school.
We do have the SRO officer in our police department. With our new chief, Marshall, I do believe that having a meeting with him, addressing some of these issues and concerns that you have, he's gonna be the best one to give you his ideas and listen to what we want and what we'd like to see things go.
All right, great, we have time for one more question.
Ray, I'm basically telling you that I'm a little unhappy. My husband and I moved here in 2018. And we moved here because the crime was pretty much at a bottom level. When we went to the Porsche Club, I addressed you and I asked you what basically the council people were gonna do regarding crime. Crime has increased in Payette. I have a lot of compassion for people that are on drugs, homeless, what have you. But basically, that doesn't really help me as a homeowner. I get very nervous that, you know, places like Chicago, San Francisco, well, they just light it off, you know? Hey, you stole something, who cares? What is Payette going to do with our crime system? Ray, that's a question for you.
I actually think it's a question for the police chief and the council, but we have a pretty good police force. And yes, there is, I mean, part of our problem is that we have people on the Oregon border. You know, drugs bring in crime. And it's, it's a significant problem for that. The best thing, I think Kathy kinda hit on it, you know, talk to your neighbors and watch out for each other, and then call the police if you see something suspicious. There's nothing harder than, you know, for somebody to get away with if the people are talking to each other, know what their neighborhoods look like, and know who belongs in the neighborhood. I'm a redneck Idaho, the other one is get your concealed carry permit, but other than that, I don't know.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, what's your position as far as enforcing the laws and getting the police to do that? That's what my question is.
Well, I, you know what my most frustrating part is, and this goes kinda to the county, is I think the police have the right idea, "Well, we can't get anybody prosecuted." I don't care what kind of crime you commit, and I kinda throw this back on the county. The police can arrest them, nothing happens to them. And I'm, I have a couple instances I can talk to you about, cases like that, that just frustrated the heck out of me. You know, they've got all this stuff wrong, and so if you wanna push that, let's push our county prosecutors and stuff to prosecute these people. Because even the police, I've talked to them about it, they arrest these people, they go pick them up, and they know they're gonna be out on the street in five minutes. It's a universal problem, but I don't wanna see it spread through Idaho. I agree with you. You know, what's it gonna arrest in somebody if, if they know they're not gonna get any punishment for it? So, and that comes out of the county prosecutors. So in my opinion, if you wanna start raising heck, and I will go right there with you, let's tell the private county, "Figure out a way to prosecute these people instead of just slapping on the hands," or, you know, they'll prosecute somebody for a little bit of drugs, but if it's very much worth it, they don't wanna prosecute them. And I hate to be critical of it, but it's the truth. I, I know people who have got felonies against them, and they haven't spent one day in jail. They're still doing the same thing they did when they got the felony. And I agree with you, we need to push the prosecutors to push these things through, because the police are arresting people, they're just not getting prosecuted.
All right, thanks, Ray.
Kathy.
And we need to move on, so, I'm sorry.
One more question.
One more?
She has a question.
Gotta do what Barb tells me to do.
Oh, no.
Sorry.
So I have one more question. This is mainly for Kathy Patrick. There was feedback recently provided on her behalf in regards to a visit to Marshalls in Ontario. Their preferences, loud music, and alleges that the employees do not speak English because the music is from the Latin despora. And I've got your comment here. It says, "I'm a resident of Pan Idaho. I've been anxiously waiting for the opening of the Ontario-Oregon Marshall store. I arrived around 11:00 a.m. yesterday morning and was greeted with very loud Mexican music. Newsflash, this is the United States and we speak English." Then, "Community members have deemed that language harmful and requested accountability on your part. And during the process, someone from your campaign, specifically someone claiming to be your daughter, sent private messages stating, 'If you are going to judge me or my mom for my grammar, you're making it personal, tread lightly. My weight isn't anything like Kathy Patrick's weight, just wanted to make that clear. This isn't personal, so put some thought in your decision across me on a personal level.'" So, we wanna know what work have or will you commit to that will label both the city of Payette and the Latin community, because there is a fairly large Latin community in our area, to move forward productively.
I am very pleased to address this, because I've never got a chance to tell my side of the story. It was not I personally that went. As I've told you, I'm the director of the senior center. We had six grandma ladies all over to myself who were very, very excited about the opening of Marshalls. So I asked our driver to take them over on the bus. It was an outing. They were very excited about going, they had the sales flyers. They were so scared they would not get off the bus because of the loud music, and they felt intimidated. When they brought them back, I wrote an email to Marshalls. Now, yes, some of that, what you said is true, some of it is not. I am a firm believer in anybody that knows me embracing all cultures, all races. But the one thing that I think is so important more today than it has ever been, because our 2020 census showed that we are a multi-ethnic nation, more so than we've ever been before. The invisible thread that keeps you all together is the English language. And I resent like hell that I have to learn a foreign language to get a job in my own country. That is wrong. The state of Idaho is one of thirty-seven states that have voted English the official state language. So if you come to our country, you should be able to maintain your language and your culture, but you also need to adjust to ours.
All right. Well, I wanted to thank all of the candidates. I think there were some very difficult questions, and I think you all did a good job. And so, thank you, and I think let's give them a round of applause. And please probably leave, or it's gonna take one minute for them to exit, and we'll have Mr. Lopez and Mr. Jensen step forward, and we'll start the mayoral portion of the program.